Good evening. Welcome to the Mott Community College Board of Trustees meeting, Monday, March 27th, 2023. Those of you that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, yes, I'd like to add some, something to the agenda. With our meeting with Dr. Beverly, the other day, we had spoke about prayer in our meeting that Dr. Beverly suggested, and I think that's wonderful. So I would like to make a motion to add prayer to our agenda.
Okay, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Seeing none, we will add prayer to the agenda. To be precise, where would you like it placed on the agenda?
We can do it right after the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Would you like to lead us in prayer this evening?
I would not if somebody else would like to. How about we start this April 1st per our meeting? That's when we, April, in the next meeting, we had decided with Dr. Beverly that we are each going to find a pastor from our church, and if anybody else would like to bring in a pastor, they're more than welcome to do so, and we can alternate.
Okay. If we're going to have prayer, it's my recommendation to the board that we have all, open to all denominations, that they be allowed to participate in the prayer, and that it be a secular prayer. I'm going to ask the board attorney if we need to vote on this, because I'm not sure, it seems like something we could go ahead and do, but I want to make sure that the entire board has the opportunity to speak on this. Please hold on just a second.
I'm Bill Blaha, is this on? I am substituting for Amberly Brennan, who is south with her children on spring break. I did hear that this potentially could become an issue, and it was my understanding we were going to provide an opinion letter. I mean, I, just off the top of my head, what you said, Chairman, is that all denominations would make sense, secular in nature would make sense, and that, you know, I want to make sure we aren't endorsing any particular religion, and we do issue an opinion letter, and we could have one ready. Your next board meeting is when? April?
April.
So with that, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to provide some greater direction and review it with the board, or Amberly will, and, and find a way to get this legally on your agendas.
Bill, I have one other question with this to you. When I served on the board the first time, we had a priest that used to do this, and he at one time made a mistake, and I think if we had it written out for each person of faith that's going to give the presentation of the prayer that day, so that they would understand, so we don't offend anyone in the community, and I'm sure that's what you're saying, but having lived through this, it was quite the challenge there for a few minutes, so.
Just so I understand, are you contemplating having different denominations at a meeting or rotate them?
As I understand it from trustee Wilcox, after the Pledge of Allegiance, there would be the prayer, and it would be secular in nature, we would rotate monthly with perhaps Hindu, Muslim.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm saying each trustee can bring in whoever they want. I mean, this is prayer, it shouldn't be that complicated.
Having lived through it, it is.
Okay.
It was, it turned into a real challenge the last time, so I want to make sure we're
Shame on those people then.
Yeah, we're covered with the legal.
I appreciate that. You know, we, we have separation of church and state. The US Supreme Court had recently allowed in a football game at the end where there wasn't a governmental function on the middle of the field, and sanctioned a secular prayer. So that's just generic, a generic response, but, you know, at, at meetings and rotation is something that we need to be able to look into and provide some greater clarity to the board.
Thank you. Does that take care of all your concerns and how you want to do this in April?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone would like to have on the agenda? There is another item that I would like to add, and it deals with the president of the college. She has been offered an appointment to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and this seems like it's a really nice thing. She asked me if it was okay. We as a board make decisions collectively. Therefore, I would like to put this on the agenda in the sense that we can at least say, yes, we are wholeheartedly support, or no, you shouldn't. There's, should be no reason, in my opinion, as I'm putting this on the agenda, that we wouldn't want it. This is something really nice to have for our college and that our president's getting it, but I don't want to be the one that makes a unilateral decision. I want each of you to be able to have a say and, and also support it. So without objection, I would like to add this to the agenda. Without objection, we will add this under new business. Is there anything else that anyone would like to add to the agenda at this time? Seeing nothing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Bear with me here. I would like to also speak about the meeting that we had with Dr. Beverly. We did talk about the renovations of the Proust Center. I would like, and I'm sure maybe the other trustees would like, a briefing, real quick on the renovations, and also, I would like to make a motion to decide if the board is going to move forward on the renovations. I'm not clear on that.
Okay. Without objection, add this to the agenda?
So in the meeting, we had said it would be April, so we're not prepared to do it this meeting, so I'm just gonna say I don't have anybody to speak to that.
That's fine. That's why I said I was unclear on this, and I had asked for briefing. That's okay.
Therefore, add it to the agenda, and Madam President, would you make sure that Jordan adds that to our agenda for the April meeting? Thank you very much. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I will ask if there is a motion to accept the agenda as written. We have a motion from Mr. Swanson.
Second.
Do we have a second? And we have a second from trustee Wilcox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The motion has been adopted. The next item on the agenda is celebrating employee and student success. Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a number of people and offices that we want to celebrate today. I'm going to start with Jason Wilson, who's going to come forward and share about the Land Awards and about our recent victories with our basketball team. Please.
Okay. Good afternoon, or good evening. Thank you, Dr. Beverly, Mr. Chair, trustees. We have a lot to celebrate with our students. They have again distinguished themselves quite a bit at the Land Awards. The Land Awards is the liberal arts development organization that really spearheads and wants to keep the liberal arts active in our state. So I'm, we have several award winners, so if you'll permit me, I want to read each one of them because they're truly deserving. So in first, the arts category, in two-dimensional art, Brandon Emmons for Control Art, Control Alt Delete received an honorable mention, and for 3D art, we swept the first three places and the honorable mention. First place was Jeremy Treese for Invasion. Second place was Julian Rodriguez Rodriguez for Padre Pia. Third place was Evelyn Canoe for Fantasies Through the Looking Glass, and Lisa Treese for Baba Yaga Recycled Shoes was the honorable mention in that regard. Also, in the photography and new media category, Mary Angst for Snow Fog won third place. Also, in poetry, Sarah Shojenman, who was scheduled to join us, unfortunately, she won't be able to join us, for her piece Refuge, took second place in poetry. Moving on to the film category, for nonfiction documentary, first place, Checks and Balancing. This was T. Sher Dunlap and Emily Pate. Second place, Flint Women and Black Entrepreneurs. This is Christine Lee, and Tracy Leon, who I believe is here with us. Tracy? Tracy may be on her way. Third place was World of Wisp. This is Kenneth Pavlik. Honorable mention was After the Mat for Madison Labonte. That's nonfiction. In the fiction category, first place, Competent Criminals went to Ethan Foster, Kenneth Pavlik, Emily Pete, Alexander Grifel, and Jeffrey Seinberg, Simberg, I'm sorry. And then second place, Beneath the Surface. This was done by Nefertiti Givens, Madison Labonte, Miguel Lemus, Aisha Mohammed. So it really stops the, or completes the Land Award winners. Again, this is a competition that our students have entered in and distinguished themselves very well, so I'd really like to give the Land Award winners a hand. Next, I'd like to recognize two aspects of our great sports program. In a second, I'm gonna call up Coach Schmidt, who can certainly speak to what's been happening with our men's basketball team. I also wanted to acknowledge, or make sure the board knows that we last month honored the Ballinger family during a game, and I have a quick synopsis of that, if you permit me to read, from Al Perry, our, our athletic director, who's unable to be here tonight. On Saturday, February 25th, the Bruin Club of Genesee County and Mott Community College Athletics Department had a brief special presentation prior to the start of the men's basketball game to show our appreciation for the many contributions of the Ballinger family. Bill Ballinger was in attendance, and we were able to give him a commemorative, a commemorative plaque and a personalized framed jersey. In addition, a brief history of the Ballinger family's contributions to the institution and the community was included in the program. So certainly, we celebrate the Ballinger family and all that they do for this college. And now, to talk about our basketball team, if I could have Coach Schmidt join me at the table.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We just returned Saturday from the national tournament in Danville, Illinois. To get there, we qualified on March 9th through 12th. We hosted a tournament here at Mott that 24 colleges, 12 women, 12 men, and I want to tell you how proud I am of, of how our college represented, and we, there was three different districts. We won, you know, we won ours to, to advance to the national tournament, but nothing but positive comments from literally hundreds of players, adults, fans, coaches. We, we did a first-class job, and I'm really proud to be part of that, and it was exciting. On the 12th, when, when we won, to get there on Tuesday of that week, we beat the 16th-ranked team, St. Clair County Community College. On Friday, we beat the 10th-ranked team, the number-one team out of Ohio, Cuyahoga, I'm sorry, Lakeland Community College, and then on Sunday, we beat Bay College up in northern Michigan, Escanaba. They were the 20th-ranked team. We ended up 18th in the, in the national rankings. Our team was young, 10 players, nine freshmen, and the best part, now, we did go to the national tournament. We, we lost to Milwaukee Area Tech, battled very, very hard this past Tuesday. They ended up winning the tournament. We played them about as tough as anybody. Had a, had an injury, a young guy get hurt, wasn't able to, you know, he's a, we're a small team, pretty athletic team, but our six-foot-sevens, Vincent Mays, freshman Defensive Player of the Year in our conference, he, he sprained his ankle and was, was unable to get back, but, but what teams do is the next person steps up, and we came back and beat a team out of Nebraska on Thursday, and hit a shot the buzzer to win. It was pretty exciting. Then we came back Friday, this past Friday, and played a really good team out of West Memphis, Arkansas, and they were, they were good. We battled back and forth and, and came up short. Traveled home Saturday, and what's great about having a freshman team like we did this year is with continued work and development, we're not gonna be a young team next year, we're gonna be a better team, and ended up with 25 wins this season, had the freshman of the year in our conference. Our conference was arguably one of the best in the country, and Mackay Ellison out of Carmen Ainsworth High School was the freshman of the year in our conference, first-team all-conference, all-Asian, all-state. Nate Brown, he was sec, or I'm sorry, third-team all-conference, and then I mentioned Vincent Mays, was all-defensive player, second-team all-conference Defensive Player of the Year. So these guys got a bright future, I enjoyed working with them. As usual, this was our 11th time getting to the national tournament. No team has had more success. We've had 33 wins and now nine losses, four national titles, three national runner-ups. Very proud of this program and appreciate all the support that we get here at Mott Community College. Thank you.
Coach, please don't leave. So if you've never been to a basketball game, there's a couple things you need to watch before the game starts and then after the game. When the game starts, the team players are all introduced. Our coach shakes hands with each one of the other players or does the fist bump. He encourages them. The other coaches don't often do that to our players. After the game, he does it again, and he also coaches the other team's players on how well they did. I like to sit and watch how this goes before and after. So there's a title we have for him for all the teaching he does, and it's coach. He's a coach. So I brought something for you on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for all the work you've done. It's the education and training that you do for our students that impress the heck out of me. Another thing, years ago, I used to work out at the fitness center. I would see him practicing with his teams, but then I would also see him take players, V.G.'s used, as a grocery store that used to be on Court Street, and it was quite often I would see him making sure that his players had food to eat. That's pretty darn impressive. That was before anybody else on the campus was thinking about doing it. This is the kind of people we all strive to be. This is what I hope that all of us attempt to be. So you don't have to open this now, and thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, is there any other special presentations?
Yes, we have some more celebrations. We have Robert, Associate Vice President for Workforce and Economic Development, Mr. Robert Matthews, who has, I think, a couple of things he wants to share.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Beverly, and good evening, trustees. The first honor I have this evening is presenting our very own Daphne Epps. I'm gonna ask her to come up and join me at the table. So Daphne is one of 12 Flint community residents who has been selected to serve on the City of Flint's American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful, but this team is going to be charged with helping the City of Flint make determinations around how they will distribute their ARPA grant dollars. The city is making $15.6 million available to community organizations, and she will sit with a team who will review those applications and make sure with due diligence that they, that the funding is going to serve the citizens of this community in the way that those dollars are, are designed to. Her term will be for six months, and we just want to say congratulations to Daphne, and thank you for your leadership and service.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
Hello, everybody. Good morning. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am just truly honored to be able to represent not only my community, but my college as well, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My second announcement is, and you may have seen, that the college recently received a $2 million federal earmark award, and this funding is going to support the expansion of literacy services throughout Flint and Genesee County. It's in partnership with two organizations, the Flint Genesee Literacy Network and the Latinx Center. The bulk of the funding is going to go to expanding what used to be the Flint Kids Reads Program. Really interesting, this program was launched with funding and support from the Dollywood Foundation and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. That funding is now going to allow books to be delivered to young persons in our community from birth to five years old. They will get a book of their choice, one, delivered to them and addressed to the individual young person. They will get one book a month, as long as they're participating in the program. Enrollment for the program will open up late this summer and early fall, and we're just really excited about this opportunity. We know that kids who, who have books in their home and in book-rich environments are better prepared when they start school, so we, we're glad to help to make that happen. The second part of the funding will support language and literacy services tutoring and after-school programming with our friends at the Latinx Center. And so, special thanks to Congressman Kildy for helping us to secure these funds to support Flint and Genesee County. Thank you.
And before you get up, I'd just like to announce that Mr. Matthews has also been appointed to the McFarland Charitable Corporation Board of Directors. He's been appointed to a three-year term where he'll, where he will be a part of McFarland's mission to maximize opportunities for quality of life by providing safe and affordable housing and caring services for our diverse older adults in the greater Flint community. Congratulations, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dale Wayhill, who's going to come forward, and Mr. Jim Scherter as well, I believe, and they're going to talk about the recent Addie Award winners.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, trustees, Madam President. There is an organization, it's the Flint Area Advertising Federation, and they have a ceremony every spring for years now where they honor outstanding contributions to advertising. It could be print, it could be a billboard that you see, it could be a radio or a TV commercial. Now that we have digital media and social media, those are categories, probably dozens and dozens of different categories. They honor businesses, local nonprofits, and governmental entities that do marketing and promotions. Since 2016, the college has been entering elements of our marketing and advertising campaign, and before I came over here, I went around our office and I counted all the different Addies, and one is circulating right now. That's a recent silver Addie. But we have at least 18 Addie Awards, is what they call them, that we've won since 2016 as an institution. There are golds, there are silvers, there's a Best in Show that we received. This year, I'm happy to tell you that we received a gold Addie for the Workforce Promise Campaign materials that we put together. The designer of that campaign is Mr. Brandon Townsall. We received a silver Addie for the Centennial Annual Giving Campaign, which is employee giving connected to our centennial celebration. That was a silver. Sarah Fulmer Ignash was the designer for that. And then the last institutional award was another silver Addie for our 30-second TV spot, Take Your Hands Into Your, Take Your Future Into Your Own Hands. It's not quite an institutional award, but Jim Scherter, who's sitting to my left and to your right, is faculty member in graphic design. He's the program coordinator and runs the Design Center, among other things, also very active in the arts community beyond the college, but he won, I'll call it a lifetime achievement award, but I don't know that he's old enough for that yet. But they give out, and they use the word silver, but it's, don't think of it as a second place like the silver Addie. It's silver in that it's for a distinguished contribution to the field locally in advertising, promotion, and graphic design. Jim got that for his own work, but also for being a tremendous mentor to the students at Mott Community College. So I'm gonna pivot and let him talk about the student side of things and our wins there.
Thank you, Dale.
Before you do, though, can we celebrate you and your win?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
It meant a lot. It meant a lot. So I'd like to share with you our student success at the Addies. We've been participating in the Addie Awards since, I think, maybe before 2010, for most of my time here. So this year, can I have the next slide, please? We entered our Design Center, which is a student-run design agency. It's an experiential learning class that we run. We give our design, our graphic design students the opportunity to work in our Design Center, which we deal with the community. We do nonprofit organizations or small startup businesses. This is a, an alternative to maybe working in, in internship with someone. So our Design Center worked with the, the Flint Art Fair, the FOMA Group that runs that, to develop the 2022 Flint Art Fair promotional materials, and these are some of those, and we can go ahead to the next slide, that you can see. These are some of the pieces. There were probably over 50 different marketing pieces that they developed for this campaign, and we entered that on behalf of the students. This was designed by Mr. James Nagley, who is getting ready to graduate from our program, as well as a team of students that he had working underneath him, Lorena Haber, who was a recent graduate, Gavin Williams, who is also a graduate of our program, and Alexis Land. They all worked under Mr. Nagley, who was the art director for that project, and they received a gold student Addie Award in that category of promotional event materials. So there's a huge congratulations to them. This piece now goes on to the This piece now goes on to the district level, which is for Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan. And their awards judging is happening sometime right now, so by April 1st, we should know if it received any additional awards. If it receives a Gold there, it will go on to the national level. And these are some pictures of the evening where the students won. We also received some student scholarships. We had three students receive the American Advertising Federation of Greater Flint scholarships. Shania Hemphill, who is a first-year graphic design student, received a $250 scholarship, as well as Paige Thomason. They both received that award. And then Joseph Buffington, who is getting ready to graduate, he's in his last semester. He was honored with a $500 scholarship from that organization. So huge congratulations to our students. Thank you.
So now, Mr. Chair, we'd like to have Becky Belcher, a Public Affairs Associate, joined by Zoom to share what's happening in Lansing.
Hi, this is Kate. Can you hear me?
You have the wrong person.
Hi, Kate. Yes, I can hear you.
There's Becky. Okay.
Okay, great. Are you ready for the update?
No, no, no. This is where-
So I believe you already have a background. You just need an update on where we're going with the board. Is that correct?
We've got the wrong person.
Given the circumstances surround-
Excuse me. It's the wrong person speaking.
Interesting. Okay. So given the circumstances surrounding the-
Kate, Kate, we're not ready for you yet.
It says the host is muting me.
Becky, would you please share?
I'll, I'll keep talking, but if I keep going, it's not me.
Please don't. Please.
Specifically, that social security numbers were impacted. We are going to proceed with formal notification.
Kate.
Oh, I'm told to stop.
Okay, Becky. She must not be able to hear us. So we're going to go ahead to Sheri, and if you would please give us the new employee introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Rebecca Mars, our Talent Acquisition and Staff Development Manager, will be introducing Kalen Hartle.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have one person to introduce tonight, and that's Kalen Hartle. She is our new Support Specialist of Industrial Technology in the Technology Division. She is an Associate in Applied Science and Automotive Technology from Mott Community College. She started working at Mott as a student employee in the automotive lab, making repairs to vehicles and equipment, as well as organizing tools and supplies. She moved into the temporary role as a Support Specialist of Industrial Technology last summer and was recently selected for the regular position with Mott. Congratulations. Prior to Mott, she was a supervisor at Do It Right Cleaning for 12 years. Kalen has shared in a recent student success story that one of her favorite things about this career in skilled trades is there's always something new to learn, and this career allows her to work in multiple trades every day while learning new skills. So we'd like to welcome Kalen as part of the family here at Mott.
Kalen, is there anything you'd like to share with the board? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So are we ready now for Becky? Okay. Okay. It looks like we're still not ready with that. So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn this back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any communications?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a few. The first one coming from Reverend Freeland Threlkell of Grand Blank, and they'd like to talk about concerning Dr. Beverly Walker-Graffia.
Testing. Thank you very much. To the Chairman and to the President and to all of the Board of Trustees, it's an honor to be here this evening. My mind went back to September of 1960, when I watched this building and this whole steward Mott to be built under the, late Dr. Rogers Psychologist and Nick Papadakis, back in the day when this was known as JC Junior College, Dr. Beverly. And congratulations to Coach Smith. I told him we had an outstanding basketball team back in the 60s, Marcellus Wilson and Mickey Akerson. Craig Coney probably remember a lot of these guys. And we had an outstanding football, intermediate flag ball team. They wouldn't let us play football. But I'm here this evening. My name is Reverend Freeland Threlkell Jr., Pastor of the Faith Baptist Temple Church. I've been a Flintstonian for over 70-some years, and it's just an honor. At my next birthday, I'll be 82 years old. Graduated from Flint Central some, in the year of 1960. I'm still hanging out with some of my alumnis, and we meet for lunch. But I'm here this evening to support President Beverly in her program and directions that she is leading this Mott Community College. I heard through the grapevine that there may be some allegations or disgruntledness among you board members against the directions of what she's doing here. And as a Flintstonian, I'm always concerned of what's going on in Flint. I believe as a resident of Flint, we are proud people. We have come a long ways. We have done some great things. We are somebody in Flint. But when I begin to hear negativism among certain trustee boards or whatever leadership, I become concerned. So that's why I'm here tonight on behalf of Dr. Beverly. We share a Saturday morning platform on WFLT 1420, but I come on at 8:00 in the morning, known as Let's Talk About It. And our mission is to cause people to stop, to think, evaluate, and then, and then make a moral decision. So I'm here to just to ask the trustee board to prayerfully-
Chair Everman, I might say, interject. So could, perhaps some clarification, I'm supposed to be recording the time, but communications versus comments from the public, what is the line of demarcation?
Yes, item number six, communication. And is this, the comments from, is, did you jump to the comments?
I'm at the wrong station. Or I'm in church in the wrong pew. You called my name, didn't you? All right.
So there's miscommunication. It's supposed to be communications, but jumped ahead to comments from the public. So that's my apologies.
Am I in order, brother president, brother chairman?
Okay. Before you begin, because it's a jump ahead.
Yep, sorry, Chair. There were no communications, though. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, Jordan. We all make mistakes.
That's right. That's why I'm here.
And, excuse me, sir. Before you start, Andrew, comments from the public, I must read this to you. "I invite the board chair shall invite the public to address the board. All citizens who wish to address the board or who wish to communicate with the board in writing shall identify themselves and/or the group they represent, if any. They must also state their reason for addressing the board."
All right.
"Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless their time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting remarks may be made by cit, other citizens by submitting it to the board for their consideration. The board may limit the number of persons wishing to address the board on the same subject to three. You've now come forward and you've started your time, but it's just a matter that we had to take care of before you could finish up. So please go ahead with your comments, sir."
Thank you, my friend. I'm here just to, first of all, I told you my name, my title, Pastor Reverend Freeland Threlkell. Faith Baptist Temple, that's the group that I'm representing, a church that I passed at over 32 years here in the city of Flint. I'm here on behalf of comments that I heard that may be rumbling among the board of dissatisfaction with her direction that she's leading the Mott Community College. And I'm just here to ask the board if there is any dissatisfaction, that you work it out and work with her, that we will lead Flint Mott Community College positively in this area. We are a great school. We are great people. And if there is any dissatisfaction, let us settle this and have no other important things of negativism in our city. We have enough already to deal with. So I'm just, want to plead to the Board of Directors that if it is any dissatisfaction with Mrs., with Dr. Beverly's performance, let's work it out. Thank you very much.
Jordan, was there anyone else that wished to address the board this evening?
Yes. Matt Smith of Davison would like to talk about the support of the Board of Trustees. Okay, Matt Smith does not wish to speak. Next and finally up, we have a written comment submitted by Michael Simon of Grand Blank. And the discussion is Correction and Board Policy Committee. "For those who don't know me, my name is Michael Simon, and for 14, and for more than 14 years, I served Mott Community College and the Board of Trustees, in particular as Board Relations Coordinator. It was my honor to serve the college, the board, and the community in this role, and I am grateful for the skills I developed during this time, particularly those in the areas of policy development and corporate governance as I continue to use them in the private and nonprofit sectors. With my, with my departure came a gap of historical knowledge, and as a result, some items are inadvertently reported without the means to ensure that they are accurate. Though minor, I feel like the board should have the correct information on a couple of items as you move forward. During your organizational meeting, I was, it was indicated that the board chair automatically serves as the ACCT representative. While the last three chairs have reserved that position for themselves, it is not an automatic appointment. Any trustee may serve as the ACCT rep, provided they are not currently serving on the ACCT board, as Mr. Reyes does currently. At your last meeting, the chair appointed himself as a member of a policy, of the Policy Committee, citing the former chair, Lenore Crowdy, as also functioned in this role. This is incorrect. The previous Policy Committee consists of Sally Shaheen, Joseph, Dr. John Snell, and Celia Turner. Mrs. Crowdy was never a member of the committee. This brings me to my actual, to the actual purpose of my comments. The Board Policy Committee, as someone who has, who was involved in the previous review of board policy, as well as the author of several of your policies and revisions, I consider the policy manual a significant part of my professional legacy, and I can confidently attest to the policies in the current forms are the result of committee members, administrators, and consultants who performed extensive research and due diligence to ensure that policies were created in the best interest of students and employees, but also in full compliance with local, state, and federal statutes. This is not a task that trustees should attempt to engage alone, and I sincerely hope that it is not your intent to do so. The previous board, the previous Policy Committee benefited by working with the administration and with retired GISD Superintendent Dr. David Spathealth in the creation and compliance alignment of the entire policy manual. Dr. Spathealth made sure the policies were drafted in a fashion, in a fashion where policies were overarching, allowing the administration to create specific rules and guidelines rather than placing those directly in the policy. This allows for the administration to make changes based on specific trends and circumstances and prevents the board from getting involved in the day-to-day operations of the college. I am sure you will find that this is a standard practice among, among community colleges nationally. In addition, when they tackle human resources policy, the law firm of Collins Blaha, who is, who currently serves as your attorneys, were consulted. They assigned a brilliant associate who practically rewrote your Section 5000, that attorney's name, Amber Lee Brennan. Finally, I urge you to avoid seeking to change, to change policy for the sake of changing policy or in order to use it to advance a specific agenda. Actions such as these are counterproductive and harmful. As trustees, it is your duty to do what is best for the institution. I recall during the appointment of the last Policy Committee, a trustee demanded to be included as part of the committee. Although his request was not granted, he was given the opportunity to meet with members to offer suggestions for revisions. While some of his questions were accepted, others were not. These include suggestions that the Code of Conduct policy remove, be removed, as well as the policy requiring a public safety officer to attend meetings, which he likened to enlisting in a police state, while not realizing it has been created in part due to his history of boorish behavior. Despite being given a chance to provide input on Section 1000, he spitefully and intentionally voted against the amendments, as well as other policy amendments during that time. Coincidentally, this trustee sits before you as both Policy Committee Chair and Board Chair. Your board policies may not be perfect, but they constitute a solid foundation that enables you to provide Mott Community College with good and effective governance. Describing them as defective, as the chair did a few months ago, is too pejorative. They were written so strongly that many have not needed revisions for more than a decade. Schools from across the state and nation have used them as a template towards their own guidelines, a fact I know firsthand. Again, I hope that you, as, as you begin this process, you do so with the promise to be thorough and well-informed, with the understanding that your actions affect students, employees, and the community as a whole. Finally, if I may offer some suggestions, the college's history is changing too fast for Policy 1110, college history, to keep up. You may wish to revise it and simply explain that a running account of the college's history will be maintained by the president and/or their designee, same for Policy 11130, mission statement. I also encourage you to amend the Code of Conduct policy 1325 to include where trustees annually sign a document attesting that they will adhere to the provisions of policy. In the same spirit, policy- In the same spirit, Policy 1361.
His five minutes have been up.
Okay.
Thank Mr. Simon for his comments. Are there any other?
That will conclude public comment for today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Daley.
I'd like to grant, um, Mr. Simon another five minutes in his communication in order to finish it completely.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Trustee Wilcox. Is there any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. It passed, so let's continue on with it.
In the same spirit, Policy 1,361, conflict of interest should include a provision requiring trustees annually signing, annually sign a conflict of interest form. I am proud to say I started, I started, I initiated this process for trustees during my tenure, and I believe it should be codified within policy. Given the chair's long history of reluctance to sign these documents, I am certain that this suggestion will not be considered. But I feel that it would be significant, sig- it would be a significant step by trustees to show transparency and the willingness to lead by example. Thank you for your time and best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Thank you, Jordan. And that concludes everything, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. We now new move to approval of the amendments. Approval of the special meeting for January twenty-third, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any corrections or changes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Was that for the special meeting?
That was a special meeting on January twenty-third, 2023.
Yes. Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to include, um, a particular public comment that was eliminated, eliminated from the January twenty-third special meeting minutes. And I'll provide it to Gordon, or to Jordan after the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections?
Uh, point of, uh, point of inquiry. Are we gonna be asked to vote for inclusion of, of the add-on?
I don't believe we can do these minutes at this time. I think we're gonna have to go to the next one. And then once it's added for the next meeting in April, we'll review them and then approve them or not. So, we're now going to go to the.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We skipped the special presentations.
Which special presentation did we miss? Yes. For the people that went to Philadelphia and Costa Rica and Barcelona.
Yes. So we're gonna start, we have a few special presentations, and we're gonna start with, uh, Mr. Jason Wilson, who's going to talk about what our stud- students did over spring break.
Okay, thank you very much. Our students, uh, and our faculty have been very busy and global. And so I wanna bring, uh, them up separately, domestic and global. I'd like to bring them up separately and let them report to you on, uh, what they have done. Uh, we'll start with, uh, our Mott clowns, our clown troupe. Uh, it's a very famous group led by, uh, Dr. Brian Ivory. And I believe Dr. Ivory has brought with him from the troupe, uh, Dominic Rensa, otherwise known as Sneakers, uh, Kate Woods, otherwise known as Scruffy, and Reagan Herr, uh, my favorite, otherwise known as Sniffles.
Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Trustees and Dr. Graffia for this opportunity. Uh, we've been asked to share with you about our experience in Philadelphia. We prepared a three-minute slide presentation that will together narrate. But before we get into that, we'd like to just know that the students have been in training, uh, for the past eight weeks leading up to spring break. They learned the art of clowning, makeup, costume design, and they also rehearsed right here in this room their, uh, anti-bully comedy magic show. I have three clowns we'll just share with you about the troupe and their experiences in Philadelphia. And Erin, if you would, please start that slide presentation. Okay, so we are the Mott Campus Clowns. Uh, we're gonna be highlighting our alternative spring break, which meant we did service. But we'd like you to meet our student clowns. This is Speckles, Honeybee, Cosmo, Sniffles, who was a student at a show about ten years ago in Flint, Kit Kat, Pancakes, Muffins, whose sister Ruffles was also a member of the clown troupe, Zami, Sneakers to my right, and Scruffy to her right. And I'll turn it over to Sneakers.
Hello. So in Philadelphia, it was a great time as we went to a bunch of different schools and boys and girls' clubs showing our anti-bullying comedy magic show. And the time we had there was really important to the kids that we were with because the teachers told us a lot about the bullying that was around those schools. And it was, it was just really important to us and them knowing that it's okay to be yourself and to treat everyone with respect. Along with the comedy show, we read a couple of books to them, and it was just all around good time. The importance of our show was the main point of going to Philadelphia and along with hanging out with all the kids with love and kindness.
So another thing we do as a Mott campus clown is parades. We call the act of clowning in a parade curbside clowning. We tell jokes, we take selfies with people, and we distribute goodies like clown noses and stickers. I absolutely love clowning in parades because my favorite part of being a clown is the one-on-one interactions you get with the public. There are just so many different kinds of people in the world. Different people react differently to clowns, um, and different people will laugh at different jokes. And it's just really cool to get to experience everything community service has to offer while dressed as a clown and having lots of fun.
Um, so in addition to clowning in parades at the elementary schools and at the boys and girls' clubs while in Philly, we also had the unique opportunity to go out in public after some of our shows. Um, so yeah, that was quite interesting. We had a lot of looks, but more importantly, we got a lot of laughs. And on the state, on one of the slides, we got to sing our special birthday song to a little girl in public. We also went to quite a few museums, such as the Independence Hall, Liberty Bell, uh, Liberty Bell, um, Muter Museum, and the Aquarium. And we also went to Franklin Institute of, uh, Science.
We get a lot of support from here, here at folks here at Mott Community College, Dr. Graffia, Jason, Kevin, a lot of the departments support the work that we do, including public safety and printing. And we'd just like to thank, um, the Board of Trustees, Dr. Graffia, and all the staff who support the work that we do with the Mott Campus Clowns. Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, our faculty participated, uh, in a trip abroad. To expand on, uh, that, we'll be representing, uh, the faculty. Will be Professor Jessica Esperanza, Associate Professor of Spanish. Uh, Jessica will talk about the work that we're doing abroad. And, uh, if you recall, we talked about the Ideas Grant. I believe it towards the end of last year. And so this trip, uh, is really, uh, oh, you guys were here too. All right, so Jessica, Chuck, and, and Carrie. I didn't know they were here, I'm sorry. Uh, they're gonna talk about their experience, uh, here. Jess, take it away. You guys sneaking up on me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, so for spring break, uh, five Mott faculty traveled to Costa Rica for an exploratory trip sponsored by the U.S. Department of State through the Ideas Grant that, um, that Jason was just talking about. Um, during the trip, the faculty participated in collaboration meetings with several Costa Rican universities um, for discussions on coil and virtual exchange as well as study abroad mobility exchanges. Um, and even just since returning within a week, we have already, um, started to schedule meetings with these universities for virtual exchange opportunities for our students. Those are already in, in the works for the next academic year. So we're really excited about, um, the opportunities that came from just those collaboration meetings alone. Additionally, each of the faculty members participated in discipline-specific, um, study abroad programming that their students will be participating in next year. Um, and so that means that fifty Mott students will have the opportunity to participate in the study abroad programming um, due to this exploration trip and then each year beyond that. The faculty members that participated were myself, Jessica Esperanza, Deborah Gibbous, Chuck Wade, Kim Simpson, and Carrie Devon. Um, and so I'm just gonna give you a very brief overview of what the faculty did outside of those meetings because again, we did have many meetings with other universities. But also, they started making preparations and doing site visits for their student programming next year. So I traveled to a coffee farm in Monte Verde um, to learn about eco-friendly, sustainable coffee production in Costa Rica. And the goal for my students is to use their Spanish to communicate with all of the workers on the farm, um, and the local families as well. Um, my students will participate in this program March 2024. Professor Deborah Gibbous provided ESL lessons to students in San Jose, um, to children in low-income communities who would not have otherwise had any opportunities to learn English. Her students will participate in that same programming in March 2024 as well. Professor Chuck Wade, do, um, he traveled to Camaronal uh, to participate in sea turtle conservation. Um, definitely the coolest trip in my opinion. Um, he's got a line of students already waiting to apply for his trip. Um, and his student, his biology students are gonna be participating in the programming that he set up in May 2024. In San Jose, Professor Kim Simpson engaged with adults at an adult daycare to help them with skills for daily occupations. Um, her occupational therapy students will be participating in that program in March 2024. And Professor Carrie Devon traveled to Capos to collaborate lots of things, um, local orba- organizations to explore sustainable business and tourism, um, and providing very unique business experience for her students. And they will participate in that same programming in 2024 as well. Um, and so we're just very grateful for all of the support from, um, Dr. Beverly and all of you and, um, the college in general um, for providing these opportunities to be able to offer to our students.
They also apparently took ninja training while they were over there. They could just sneak up on people without telling. Last, um, I'd like to call up Chef Handy, Mark Handy, uh, and several of our culinary arts students who traveled to Barcelona, uh, Spain, uh, to interact with the Culinary Institute of Barcelona.
Chef.
Yes.
You're.
Oh, my bad, sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you for having us this evening. I traveled with ten students to the Culinary Institute of Barcelona tonight. I have three of those with me. To my right is Julie. To my left is Asia. And to her left is Jesse. So we, we spent forty hours, uh, four ten-hour days in culinary school, where we learned a lot about, um, innovation, uh, their, their tech, their, uh, practices and education were very different to what I'm used to here in America, uh, as well as we had the opportunity to do some hands-on culinary skills such as, um, um, molecular gastronomy, chocolate class. We did a field trip where we went to an anchovy farm, and the students learned how to clean anchovies, um, as well as an olive farm and things like that. So it was an excellent opportunity, um, I think that we'll see in the future. Um, I know that the culinary, uh, the administrator from the Culinary Institute of Barcelona is putting together, um, a proposal for us, uh, that, uh, which would then enable us to continue to bridge those relationships in the future. So, uh, that's a little bit about, uh, the perspective from me. For me personally, it was my first time to Europe, as well as most of the students. So I don't know, Asia, if you wanna say anything about your experience?
Um, hi, everyone. My name is Asia. It was also my first time out of the country. Um, and it was life-changing. It's an experience that you can explain, but is better experienced through yourself. I've wished that it wasn't so expensive for some people because I really think that it should be mandatory for people to go out because what you learn is, it's unparalleled. The food, the way that they speak about the food and the way that they like to teach you, it like, you can just see the love and just how incorporated it is in, how, what am I trying to say? And how great and how much they respect it. Um, they, whenever they speak about an ingredient, they can tell you exactly where the region comes from and things like that. And not that we don't do that here. It was just a special thing to learn over there and learn how great they were, not only at teaching us, but how willing they were to teach us and how nice and friendly they were. And any question that we had, they answered. And it truly was just amazing. I came up with my signature dish, which was not a challenge while we were there, but just based on the things that they were teaching us, I was like, oh, my gosh. I can add this, or oh, my gosh, I can add this. Like, we learned how to turn butter into sand. That's just amazing things that truly I'll never forget.
Next, we'll have the budget presentation and the water report by, um, Mr. Gauthier.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Daley.
Before we launch into the budget presentation, could we take a brief break?
How long would you need for recess?
Ten minutes.
We stand in recess for ten minutes? It is currently eight forty. We will reconvene at eight fifty.
So how you been?
I've been all right.
Is it working you hard?
Yeah, we're actually, I'm busy, but, uh, we're slow.
Oh, okay.
Normally, the hoes are slow time anyway, so.
Yeah, I couldn't believe I went to LaPierre and, this morning, and it was raining here, and then I ran into snow and.
I was trying to turn into spring. Didn't quite dare yet.
No, it's not.
Uh, you know, come August, when it's ninety degrees, should we? You'll be complaining about the heat too. You know, everybody does.
I know, but still. Uh, I do love warmth.
Yeah, I'd rather be warm, too warm than cold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you were busy, couldn't make it to the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to look at change in time to work?
No, I don't think so.
Because I'm not opposed to whatever.
Yeah. No, that was just, that, it just, what happened was that week was our annual County Road Association meeting in Lansing.
Oh, okay.
And.
Well, you gotta take care of work first.
My loyalty goes to whoever signs that check.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So.
Well, if it's, you know, if it's a problem or whatever, let's talk about it. We'll switch it around to where her can be there and.
Yeah, that's.
Because it doesn't matter what time it is for me, you know, so.
Doesn't seem like some of the things on the miscellaneouses, does it really require an action? Or is it just a request, like, sure, if we asked for it, get it, like, updates for?
What, oh, the update?
Yeah, like all the app or the miscellaneous things that are grabbed on or, like, we need that, you know? Just ask.
Yeah.
We get the report that you.
Yeah, we really demand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Barry Valerie's dad, you know?
Oh, really? Oh, that's right. So I, I didn't join, but I was, it was before they.
Oh, man. I'll tell you, they're getting old socks.
Yeah, but you're getting old, some people worse.
It's true. It's true. Although I can't complain, I really had, this last, about the last five days, it was really good days.
Well, the older you get, you have good days and bad days.
And good days, good hours and bad. Yeah. Oh, you're welcome. Yeah. I know, I've had, I've had kidney stones. As soon as you said that, I said, oh, my God. I couldn't get it in any sooner.
I just went to, because I was having pains up in here.
Yeah.
You know, I'm known, I'm prone to make kidney stones. I've already had eight liver trypsies.
Oh, wow.
So my last one, one of my cousins.
Check, check.
Test, 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 test.
The meeting is now reconvened. Larry, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Chair Everman. So I am here tonight to give you a budget presentation along with a tuition recommendation that I went over in the committee meetings. But I do want to go over again before you tonight in case that you had some time to think about it at the weekend and had any questions. So let me get started. So considerations in the recommendation, our board policy seventy-three hundred, stated property taxes, investment, bailer trust income, HERF savings from prior years, these are all the income items that we have, other financing sources and uses. Inflation clearly has to be a component of any decision that we make or recommend, excuse me. The student impact, that's extremely important as well. And then the, also in addition to this new tuition, State of Michigan Tuition Restraint Language that's in place, and finally, financial stability. That really needs to be the center of all of our decisions that we make, any recommendations I bring forward to you. So I'll go through the board policy, the seventy-three hundred tuition and fees. It reads, annually, in conjunction, consultation with the president, the board will set tuition rates for the college. Two statements. The first statement, the president or his or her designee will develop an annual report on recommended tuition based on projected college revenues and expenditures, comparative study of other community colleges in the local college/university market. Statement two just goes to show the different types of tuition that we have, in district, out of district, and then in, or out of state, excuse me. So the revenue, the funding pie looks kind of like this. It looks different than it did in ninety-nine, two thousand, I think it's important to note. One-third, one-third, one-third was kind of the rule, the rule of thumb that we followed. You can see in ninety-nine, two thousand, it was closer than it is now. State funding was fifteen point seven million dollars. Fast forward to twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see that tuition is clearly the largest segment of our pie now in the revenue. State funding is at seventeen point nine million dollars, while that is two point two million dollars more than it was in ninety-nine, two thousand, which is a considerable amount of money. But if you divide that by twenty-three years, it's not even close to keeping up with inflation. So we've been much more tuition reliant in these last few years. The other percent's going up as well, as I explained. We have HERF funding, the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, which is over at June of this year. And then also, going forward, our other component back in ninety-nine, two thousand, also the five percent in addition to the bailer trust income, there was also a considerable amount of investment earnings. We're gonna start seeing that again, as I explained before. The inflation, while it's been a killer to our expenses, it also helps for those who are saving and are able to invest and get more back. So it's kind of a buffer or a hedge against that. Another thing I need to mention is that the State of Michigan did enact Tuition Restraint Language, started last year. It will be, we're told it will begin this year as well. Last year was five percent or two hundred twenty-six dollars, whichever is greater. This year, we're hearing four and a half percent, and the dollar amount is, I think it's less than two twenty-six, actually. But again, it's whichever is greater. Why is that significant? Well, the reason it's significant is because in past years, or any year prior to two years ago, if something happened that was tremendously impactful to our budget, as a down, state aid was cut drastically, property taxes, which I'll go through, were dropping precipitously in those years. There could be actions made on the tuition side to increase more than we would've liked, more than inflationary, more than four and a half percent. That's gone. That option for us is gone going forward. I can almost guarantee that. And the reason I say that is because the state, as they're trying to get more funding in to help students through the programs such as, it's not No Worker Left Behind, I was going back to that one. It's the two that we have currently, the Future for Frontliners, thank you, and the Michigan Reconnect. So what that means is the state doesn't want to get burned from community colleges who raise their tuition by ten percent, twelve percent. They're saying, you know, we're gonna help with this, but you're also gonna have to keep your tuition at these restraint. And this is new to us, it's always been in higher ed, or been higher ed a lot longer. So going on property taxes, I spoke to this and setting up this for decisions that we had to make previously, back in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. This loss in property tax revenue, this is operating property taxes, so back in two thousand nine and ten, we received twenty-three point three million dollars in operating property taxes. This year, in twenty-one, or twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to receive twenty-two million dollars. So we still have not gotten back to where we were in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So we had to take actions back in those years that were not real popular, that were not, because of tuition and the fees, we increased those more than we would've liked, in addition to budget cuts. Had we not done that and said, you know, we have enough reserves, we can just continue to go forward and see what happens, that fifty-three point two million dollars that's compounded and lost, we had to make some of that up. As we knew that the property taxes would come back, we had to make that up as we went, and partially with tuition and partially with budget cuts. So a balanced approach is always good. And keep in mind, any decision we make going forward compounds itself, either positively or negatively, it just does, that's the way finances work. Other significant funding sources that we have, bailer trust. We all know what the markets did last year, we all know that they didn't do very well, and we all know that our bailer trust is gonna be less. The nice thing about the bailer trust is that it's a five-year average, so we don't take any full hit, good or bad, in one year, so it just smoothes it. So I'm gonna estimate somewhere around two point three million. We're gonna have a decrease from two point five million. Investments, this is what I talked about a little earlier as well. This is the upside of our inflation problem, is that we are going to be able to invest and get more returns on our money than we did just even a year ago. As I stated to you in the committee meetings, I mean, if we were getting point two-five or point one-five percent for any investment that was safe, because we're restricted in what we can invest in, that would've been good. So now we're seeing rates above five percent, and I don't see that going down in the near year or so. Rates are still going up, so that will help us. HERF, that's gone. June twenty, twenty twenty-three, it is gone, we don't have it anymore. But again, as I will show later, we were able to retain a good portion of that money to be able to help support us going forward. Foundation for Mott Community College, that four hundred thousand dollars, we anticipate will receive again this year, and that goes as earmark for marketing efforts at the college. So HERF funding, we see three tranches here that we receive, CARES, Carissa, and American Rescue. You see the grant award in the next column, the grant period. You'll see that the grant period then, as I said, is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for all of it. And the type of support that we received and the way we were able to bring it back and unrestricted, because it was restricted for specific activities, and as I mentioned in the very beginning, it was completely and one-hundred percent pandemic-related. If it was a pandemic response, you could charge it. If it wasn't a pandemic response, you couldn't charge it. And so as these funds came in and they recognized there was a substantial amount of money that colleges would need going forward, because although the pandemic ended or the HERF funding ended in June of twenty twenty-three, you can see that things take time to come back. You see the property taxes, how long it takes for things to come back. So that's what's happened, and we were able to retain ten point seven million dollars of our total award and retain that in our reserves for the future. Next, so inflation, we talked about in the consideration. Our Midwest CPI, this is by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. You can see at the calendar year end of two thousand nineteen was two point three percent. Twenty twenty, one point one, not bad. Twenty twenty-one, seven point five. Twenty twenty-two, six. And as I communicated to you in the committee meetings, February is still six, so it's not dropping. Another thing we want to look at is comparison community colleges, right? Local cost comparison. So you see the community colleges closest to us on the left, their in-district tuition rate, out-of-district tuition rate, survey costs, and then the approved, proposed tuition increase from twenty-three, twenty-four. And this came from, as I shared with you, the McBoa meeting that I attended in the spring, the colleges that were there. I compiled, there's always a survey done and compiled what their actions are, what they're proposing. Going through this, a couple of things stick out, right? And they should. You can see that we are the second highest in in-district tuition. St. Clair is higher by a dollar, just roughly less than a dollar. Our out-of-district tuition is the lowest, one eighty-five, twenty-three. Survey cost, so again, survey cost is there to try to normalize a cost for an incoming freshman. All community colleges set their own tuition. All community colleges set their fee structure. They're all different. So in order to try to figure out what it costs a student coming in, what we did at McBoa was said, okay, listen, an incoming freshman takes a biology, a biology lab, a psychology or sociology class, an English and a math class. How much does it cost that student? So if you look at the survey cost next, you'll see that actually, we now become third highest. School craft becomes more, more expensive on the survey. But yet, the tuition is one thirty-one, right? In-district tuition for school craft, so if you just stop there and look at that and say, wow, that must be the better bargain, or that must be the better deal, that must be the better value. And that's why it's not a complete discussion. When we talk about in-district tuition for community colleges, that's not, that's not the entire discussion. The reason for that is, as you can see, our three-legged funding. The reason for that is, as you can see, our three-legged funding stool or the revenue pie showed you state aid, property taxes, and tuition. Property taxes and state aid are there to supplement, subsidize what's being charged for tuition. So it only stands to reason, if you're receiving a tremendous amount more than one of those other two, then you don't have the reliance on the third tuition, like, or the cost should be lower. And this bears itself out, if you look at those same community colleges that I just showed you on the previous slide, St. Clair is higher, they're receiving ten million less in property taxes. Then starting going right down the rest of them, Delta, which is lower than us, they receive two point four million more. And this is just operating property taxes. Schoolcraft fourteen, Macomb twenty-two, Lansing twenty-two point two, Oakland seventy-five point five. So I would hope that those schools would be lower in tuition, in-district tuition. They're receiving more local support from their taxpayers. So another comparison with four-year universities, you can see that this is the Petersons report, and it does, that sixty-three, thirty-six Vermont does not include the four point five percent recommended tuition increase. Saginaw Valley State's next, eleven-five, going all the way down to Kettering at forty-four point, forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. This is just to show that the reason we do the comparison with universities instead of other community colleges is that most, by and large, a student in this district, if they're going to college and they're going to a community college, they're going to Mott Community College. They're not going to go to Oakland Community College, they're not going to go generally there, because if you go back, another slide that I showed you too, they have to pay now out-of-direct district tuition, not in district, because they're not in that district. And again, we were the lowest in the in-district or out-of-district tuition. So past tuition actions that the board has made, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-one academic year was zero. Twenty-one, twenty-two academic year was one percent. Twenty-two, twenty-three was zero, and we are proposing four point five. Laying that against inflation, you can see that the actions that were made on tuition versus inflation, you can see going, starting with the first academic year in twenty twenty-one, if you want to compare to inflation, to what we did in tuition is two point three percent less. Second year, pretty much, it was very negligible, point one percent less. Seven point five percent in twenty twenty-one, and then six percent in twenty twenty-two. So even if at the four point four percent recommended tuition increase, we would still be eleven point four percent off inflation in those past three years. Impact on students, we have a substantial amount of Pell students, meaning that they receive federal grant dollars to come to our college. The full Pell zero EFC, again, zero. EFC means zero expected family contribution. Like I said, I always want to see employee for some reason, but zero expected family contribution. So if there is a student that comes and fills out their award, or excuse me, fills out the application and comes up, zero EFC, we don't expect you to contribute anything because there's no income, there's no assets, we don't expect anything, there's no way that you could. They were eligible in academic year twenty-one, twenty-two, which was two years ago, at sixty-three ninety-five. Twenty-two, twenty-three academic year, the one we're in right now, sixty-eight ninety-five, five hundred dollar increase from the previous year, seven point eight percent. The next academic year, which will be starting on July one, seventy-three ninety-five, another five hundred dollar increase, seven point three percent. So my point is, inflation doesn't just impact us, it doesn't just impact you, it impacts everyone. And the recognition for that is that the federal government recognizes that as well and understands it costs more to attend because of inflation and their increase in the Pell awards. So the final thing I want to talk about is financial stability, fiscal reserves. So we have reserves that are required by Board Policy thirty-nine thirty. You can see it going across zero, one, seventy-two, and seventy-eight. Zero, one is our operating fund. Ten to twenty percent of annual operating expenses are, is the target by Board Policy. And again, that was just increased recently when Dr. Beverly came, it was at five to ten, and we increased it to ten to twenty because we were woefully low. We're at fifteen percent. Seventy-two and seventy-eight, again, are building replacement, maintenance replacement fund building in sight. These are capital-type improvements that we could do on our, that would be designed for that, designated for that. That's why it's contingent on the amount of assets that we have. So it's one to three percent of college depreciated assets. So that's six point seven million dollars in those two funds. It's a lot of money. And I can almost guarantee you, if things go bad this one summer, of roofs, boilers, chillers, there's a, you know, most of our improvements on this campus were done in the mid-seventies. And we are at a time that we're going to have to start doing this again. And I'll say one other thing. If it wasn't for our bond funds, this would have to be a minimum five times more, minimum. So we're very grateful, or not grateful, no, we're very grateful, we're extremely, lost the word. It's very good that we have the bond funds, let me say it like that. So anyway, this helps support that, and that's why the levels are, the requirement levels are as what they are, because we have the support of taxpayers and the bond funds to be able to rely on. So bank investments, non-debt accounts, and the reason I'd say non-debt accounts is because our debt accounts are restricted to repay debt, they have to be kept separate and we can't spend them. So Fund oh-one, you'll see Chase Bank, seventeen point four million, as I said before, this is a snapshot in time. At that point in time, we captured it, that's how much was there. That changes daily. So we generally are using those for compensating, compensating deposits against bank fees. And if we were to impute that, and so our bank fees are set. So if we didn't earn enough credits to get three million dollars in credits and bank fees, and we only have nine, ninety-five thousand in bank fees, we get ninety-five thousand dollars. We don't get any other return than that. So that's the difference from using that to actually investing it and getting interest. So that's where we're at now. So we are good, we haven't paid bank fees, it's been very good for us. But again, if I were to impute that out or extrapolate that out and say, what is our return, it's going to be less than a half a percent. You can see the MyLife that I talked to you about, the board just set up the policy to start that in February, thirty million dollars. We're getting an average of four point seven, four percent on that, on that thirty million dollars through June of this year. Fund seventy-two and Fund seventy-eight, again, those are our reserve accounts and unallocated seventy-two dollars that we have. We have multi-bank securities, those are staggered certificates of deposit. Those are not returning a lot either, but until recently, and now we're seeing, like I said, in the five percent range, on short, what I'm going to call short-term money, less than a year. And then I also want to know, make sure that you understand that twelve point five million dollars of this is the deposit from the CSMA Foundation that they put as a down payment on the Prowl project that we're investing in as well. So that ends my budget and tuition recommendation report. Thank you.
Before you leave, trustees, do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So in summary, where we're currently at, I mean, going back to one of your earlier slides, is that costs are going up across the board, operational costs, you name it. And then we can only have an incremental increase in what we're getting in property taxes because of, is it Hadley?
Hadley.
Hadley, yeah. So it's one percent, is that?
No, it's five.
Oh, five percent, that's right.
Or inflation, whichever is less.
But we, that's just a slow and steady kind of rebuilding that probably started in mortgage meltdown in two thousand eight that we're still kind of rebounding from. And we have no guarantees of increased state support either.
No, we do not.
So really, at this point, you know, you look at, I wish I were Oakland County, with their tax revenue that they bring in, but, so I guess the alternative is that we diminish, you know, what we can provide and become financially potentially insolvent and come out in the future. In summary, so.
Are there any other questions for Larry? Mr. Daley?
I thought the, the chart where you, that you showed is where you showed Mott Community College tuition costs versus the four-year institutions was a very interesting chart. And it kind of is a little ringer for me that any type of relationships we're going to have with the four years, we've got to take a really good look at from a financial perspective to ensure that we continue to offer the students a high-quality education for at least the first two years at a low cost, that that option remains open to them. And we're seeing a lot of, huge increase in operational costs. Not only the cost itself, but also the length of time it takes to get any type of complex equipment. Now, it's not uncommon for it to span, in order, say, for a truck to span one or two physical years, now we're seeing it span three physical years. And you couple that with inflation, and it makes budgeting significantly more difficult.
And I will add, as far as inflation and escalation of costs, you know, food has been a huge one, so we're not that impacted by food, but where we are is energy. And I will tell you that we buy our energy in bulk, our gas in bulk, and we go through a third party to buy it. We can buy up to three years and fix the price. And in the past, we would see increases of, you know, two, three, maybe four percent, it would be a bad year. Starting this year in October, we were over to buy, we haven't told June to buy, we were over fifty-five percent increase in our gas. It's dropped now down to thirty-seven, and it's still ticking down a little bit, so we'll hold on until June unless it spikes, then we'll jump in then. But we can't lock in, like we did before with savings, on the, on the energy that we were able to before. That's a significant, significant increase for us.
And then the last question is, what steps are you taking to ensure the distribution of funds and in bank accounts?
Good question. So this all comes from the whole, you know, everybody's looking at this now with all the bank failures in two thousand eight that happened, those are investment banks, and now we have the Silicon Valley Bank. So we're never, ever going to be able to FDIC insure all of our, our money, it's just not going to happen. And the reason for that is, is the way it's structured within the current investment policy that we have, that we operate under. In order to do a CD, what's, right now, deposits are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there has to be a physical location in this bank, in the state. We can't do Community Bank of Montana or whatever and start putting those deposits with those. We could do that then and get insurance on all of it. So what we did, that MyLife Trust, the investment trust, which is all, which are highly liquid and highly safe investments that they're doing, mainly U.S. Treasuries, right? And for the, those people who, with SVB Bank, they said that's what took the bank down was the Treasuries. What took that bank down was a run on the bank, and they had their money tied up in zero Treasuries or zero percent or one, or very low yielding Treasuries, and they had to sell those at tremendous losses to become liquid again. So Treasuries are still the safest investment we can get that's not FDIC insured. So that's where we're parking a lot of it, with, other than the CDs that we have and multi-bank securities, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each one.
Larry, this goes back, you were here when Dr. Schenk was here.
I was.
And he always encouraged the board to make small.
Yes.
Increases in tuition. That way that there would be no big one. And with the price of eggs as high as they are, though we don't buy many eggs, it just shows the amount of inflation that the students' families are having to pay just for food.
Right.
So. Are there any other trustees that have a question for Larry? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I think I have one more.
You just are the man of the moment.
I think this was requested the water, so we'll get started with that. Can someone load that up for me? Is it next? Okay. There we go. All right, perfect. So you'll see Mott Community College water, main campus filtration, and it has Larry Gothab and Larry Kohler. Well, Larry Kohler is no longer here, obviously. And the point of that is, is that I need to take you back to October nineteenth of two thousand and fifteen. That's when this was presented. So the historical perspective and all the work that was done by this college was memorialized in this presentation, so I wanted to share this with you and then just go forward and let you know what we've done since, and then take you up to the boil notice that happened on February the tenth. So just as history, I think everybody knows, we talked about the deterioration of Flint City water and all the steps that took us there from the Karen Gandhi water, the Detroit not providing the water anymore, and all the steps it went through. Take us all the way to City of Flint reconnects to Great Lakes water back on October sixteenth of two thousand and fifteen. So I won't go through each one of these steps, but this is kind of a history of what happened. Clearly, the water in Flint was corrosive, and it's evidenced by this picture here of a nail. And this came from Dr. Mark Edwards and the testing that he did. So we then did our own water testing. We said, listen, we need to do a comprehensive test. Obviously, we had to hire a company to help do it, to take those samples too. We tested for a hundred potential contaminants, each found elevated levels of some contaminants, not all contaminants. And then we found that they were not consistent either in the sampling that we did. September was different than February. So actions to date as of October of two thousand and fifteen, we went to the leadership meeting and led these following actions. We installed faucet filters where water is directly consumed, which is a Bear Bistro, Applewood Cafe, Culinary Arts Series, Cosmetology Staff and Breakers. Keep in mind, Applewood Cafe and Culinary was still on main campus at this time. We installed water coolers for faculty and staff. We also reduced the cost of retail bottled water through the Bear Bistro and vending machines. So we worked with them, those retailers, to drive the cost of vending machine water down too. And they helped with that. So we had discussions with the board, engineered a building-level filtration solution. We also were working with Kettering and U of M Flint, they were in the same situation we were, getting the water from the same source. We were conducting testing over the next week, analyzing results, and then try to come up with a filtration strategy, and then we'll bring our conclusions to the board. So our, oh, I skipped a slide there. Can you take me back? I'm sorry. Fat finger, thank you, Aaron. So long-term solution was recommendation from an engineering firm that we would have Crystal Quest water filters, which are the hydration stations that you'll see throughout campus, has a bubbler unit and then also a fill station on the bottles. We're installing in thirteen buildings, we purchased direct from the manufacturer, and then we got sealed bids to get the installation performed. Then you'll see the implementation schedule started in September two thousand and fifteen and in December of two thousand and fifteen, and we completed in December of, December twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, of all the installation of the hydration stations. Costs, that was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation of that. We did actually get two hundred thousand back from the state of Michigan in supplemental bill, because we went and testified and worked with our legislatures to try to get some sort of reimbursement for these additional costs. And these costs are ongoing, not that the hydration stations, they do, the filters need to be changed frequently, also testing we're doing continuously. So those costs are still going on. So we did bond funds to complete the project, and then we postponed some projects going forward because we had to have this outlay at that period of time. Point of use filtering, we had three in the Bear Bistro, two in the Culinary Arts, you can see going down. And these are the point of use where we just put tap filters, if we don't faucet filters on, and those need to be replaced much more frequently than the bottle hydration filters. Also existing water cooler locations, we had more water coolers on campus for people, and then more water cooler locations as well. So in line with other community college, sorry, with other colleges and universities in our area, Kettering is using a point of use filtration, hydration stations like us. U of M Flint is considering a filtration at the building level. I don't think they ever went that route. And we were proposing a filtration level at the building level as well, but we moved off of that and did a loop in the Bistro, but then the hydration stations everywhere else is what we, what we went with the final. So since then, we have engaged services of DuBois Chemical, or maybe Dubois, I'm not sure. They were Eldon water specialists, very good firm that worked a lot with hospitals and other colleges in the area. And they helped us also with this. In addition to lead, we had Legionella that we had to consider as well. So they helped us with that plan as well. So they helped us with that plan as well and with the water safety plan. We began monthly water testing and posted those sites to our website. We did switch that to quarterly in the pandemic. We also installed a copper-silver unit in LaPierre. We also have a portable copper-silver unit that we can move to all the buildings. We had to get those retrofitted so that we could hook those up, and that's for Legionella. So we, LaPierre was running some areas that were higher in Legionella. We decided we might as well just get an entire unit there, hook it up, and to eliminate the Legionella bacteria. Another thing significantly that I need, want to mention is that less usage of the water in the flow is oftentimes the first part of causing problems with Legionella in our water. So we are flushing, we have flushing protocols with the custodians to make sure that we are running the faucets, running the filters, or running the, flushing the toilets, just keep water moving through the buildings. In the summer, we noticed it before the pandemic, that was really, it would, it would kind of spike at those times. So I want to take you now to the February, I think it's in your packet, I don't have a slide for you, but February tenth, twenty twenty-three, City of Flint water boil incident, and then our response. So on Friday, February tenth, a boil water advisory was reported by Mayor Sheldon Neal's office around eleven AM. All customers who receive water from the City of Flint Municipal System were advised to boil their water for sixty seconds before using it to drink, cook, et cetera. News reports came out, employee reports started coming in, which caused the college leadership to assess the situation. The actions that we took, we notified our students at twelve forty-two that there was a water main break and that not to drink the water. Then we also, for sources for drinking, sources for drinking water, signage placed on them until the water boil advisory was lifted, so do not drink on all the hydration stations, do not use. Monday, so the following Monday, the boil advisory was lifted by the City of Flint at ten fifteen. Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Eagle recommended flushing filter changes and aerator cleaning. So the college, based on that, we started our response. In the early afternoon, the custodial staff began flushing the water lines on campus. The initial flushing took place in custodial closets, which allowed us to move water more quickly. By late afternoon, staff had to remove, to replacing portable sink filters, then under bathrooms to flush things in toilets to get the flush through. All water filters were replaced, with the exception of the hydration stations. So the decision not to replace the hydration stations was made for three reasons. The filters are large enough to withstand loose sediment that may be free once liners are pressurized. The filters were changed approximately six weeks previously, so they're relatively new, and they last for six months. We currently have all boulders locked out of campus, which restricts use to only individuals who have a container, meaning that the bubbler units would not be acceptable to having the larger sediment coming through. So by midday on Tuesday, February fourteenth, all water lines have been flushed and all sink water filters have been changed. Wednesday, we sent out an all-clear message to employees.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Saying none. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll have Jason Wilson and Robert Matthews to talk about accreditation and enrollment.
So in terms of accreditation, just a brief update there. The Higher Learning Commission, or HLC, as you'll hear us refer to that, affirmed us to continue being accredited through our annual reaffirmation cycle, which will take place in two thousand and twenty-eight. We did a mid-cycle review, forty items were looked at. We went forty for forty in terms of all those items being met with no recommendations. However, we will, we are going to take a look at a few things that we know we can strengthen, specifically around something called co-curricular assessments. That really deals with learning outside of the classroom. But it's a very strong report, and I'd like to publicly thank the team that worked on that report, including Dr., led by Dr. Kevin Asman. Also, within the space of accreditation, our dental programs, dental assisting, dental hygiene were reaffirmed through their report. We did receive back some recommendations moving forward that had to do with our ratios in terms of faculty and students. We need to make some changes and make those ratios smaller, so we're actively making those improvements as we speak. That's accreditation. Okay. So we'll move into the enrollment presentation. Next slide. So you received the presentation. I really want to give our institutional research office a kudos. They did a great job with the data. I want to run through the data. I also want to start us with really a definition of terms. These will be terms that in this presentation and subsequent presentations, you will often hear me use these terms, so I'll talk about those. We'll look at our trends over five years. We know that the request was for three, but we felt like five would really give a clearer picture. We'll look at that same timeframe through the lens of GISD, which has been our primary feeder of students for the college, and then we'll kind of close up with a conversation around distance education versus online learning. So to start with the definitions, enrollment, contact hours, credit hours, and enrollment status. These are four key terms that you'll hear me reference in terms of enrollment whenever I'm talking about enrollment. First enrollment, enrollment really refers to headcount, the number of students that we have enrolled at a given time. You'll hear me talk about that in the space of a semester. I may tell you, you know, winter enrollment is this, fall enrollment is that. You'll hear me talk about that over a year. So two thousand and twenty-two enrollment is this, twenty-two enrollment is that. You'll also hear me talk about that, as we'll do tonight, year over year in a more longitudinal fashion. But that specifically refers to the number of students that we have, the headcount that we have. That reference, or I guess juxtapose against contact hours, really refers to the number of contact hours, essentially the number of time that a student is in front of their instructor in a semester, which determines their tuition rate. So when you look at headcount and you, and enrollment, and you also think about contact hours. For us, contact hours is more of the priority in terms of looking at tuition revenue and ensuring that we are whole from a enrollment standpoint. That very much lines up with credit hours, or the number of classes that a student takes, credits, also improves or increases the number of contact hours that a student takes. And then that juxtapose also with a student's status, enrollment status. We'll get into the numbers, but I would tell you this before we do. If we're in a stretch where we have a decrease in the number of students that we have at the college, it's very important for us to have as many full-time students or students that are taking more credits than not. So having fewer students taking more credits essentially is the strategy that we have addressed moving forward. Next slide. Some additional definitions, retention really anchors our strategy. That's looking at our students returning from one year to the next. We'll have the conversation about distance education, really a limited approach to online, and now online learning, which is really a scaled approach to where we are in reference to after the pandemic.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening again. So I'm going to talk about workforce, the courses offered through the Workforce and Economic Development Division. These are non-credit courses, and they are really in a wide variety. So they could range from a personal hobby or enrichment course, like motorcycle safety, to something that is offered to a corporate entity that might be like OSHA, or a leadership course, and then move on to something that is more like our workforce training programs that are focused on career training, like our medical assistant program, or something like our Google, one of our Google IT software programs. They really focus on persons being able to gain new skills and credentials. Sometimes it's a third-party credential or state licensure. And these courses are not counted in the overall enrollment, but we do report the enrollment numbers to the State Center for Educational Performance and Information, and also to the voluntary framework for accountability. And we talk about often clock hours, which will be a little different than credit hours, and they are literally hour for hour, the seat time that a student would sit in a class. So just one quick example, in a medical assistant program, the student would have to sit for six hundred hours of classroom and laboratory time, plus a hundred and twenty hours of an externship with one of our workforce partners to meet the minimum requirements to get licensure.
Okay, so now we're going to look at the snapshot over the last five years from some different parameters, headcount, contact hours. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. First, looking at headcount. Over the last five years, you can see that really what we're illustrating from two thousand seventeen, eighteen through twenty-one, twenty-two, very much some dramatic fluctuations in our headcount. For us, really illustrating how our enrollment and our students have really shifted, who our students are, have really, has really shifted over that time. It shows you really the shrinking of traditional age students, our high school graduates, and more of our footprint or increase in the dual enrollment space and with adults. That has really been the biggest contributor to this kind of fluctuation. Next slide. However, during that time, going back to contact hours being really our strategy, as we were seeing these fluctuations, you can see that our efforts around retention and around student status, ensuring that students were taking more classes and retaining from year to year, allowed us to have success in this space. In fact, and it's one of the things that I'm known for saying around here, in nineteen twenty was really our first year of having a plus in headcount and a plus in terms of stability of contact hours. So I felt at that time, we were really at that point where we could start to see some growth. And then March two thousand and twenty happened. So that's where you'll see the dip in terms of that. However, you can see again, employing those same strategies that you've heard me talk about in different meetings, we continue to be strong with our retention and with our ability to get our students to take more than just one or two classes. Next slide. It's also important that we want our students to maintain credit hour or credit loads that get them closer and faster towards graduation. This really propels their momentum, keeps them on track, and prevents them from stopping out. Again, that nineteen twenty year, our best year in terms of students taking more credits in a given semester. And next year, you can see what happens. So we're still really looking at these strategies, contact hour strategies, credit strategies to ensure that we're getting, as we really are trying to increase our headcount while we're in that space, is very important that our strategies really center around having students take more classes, stay longer, and keep us sustained in that regard. I think you got to go back one. Yep.
So I want to talk to you a little bit about the non-credit enrollment trends. And so as you can see, that five-year trend, if you look at, and it's funny, on here, the colors are gray and gold, but if you look at the, at the gray color, that represents our unduplicated headcount, so those are individual students. If you look at the gold color, it's going to represent course enrollments, and the difference really is that you could have one student who's in more than one course or program. So that's, that accounts for the difference there. You can see we run an upward trend prior to the pandemic. We took a dip right into the pandemic, and then last fiscal year, we started to, to see an increase a little bit, and, or back to some of the previous years, really, in terms of enrollment. And we are trending upwards this year as well. So the next slide, really, I wanted to point out to you that while those non-credit enrollment numbers are not in the traditional enrollment count, we are doing some very intentional and strategic things to ensure that students who start in our non-credit programs have a way of transitioning into our credit programs. And so we added a goal, you'll see an under-goal ten in the strategic plan that really focuses on measuring those transitions and setting a benchmark. And so we've set a goal that we would have an increase by at least three percent, and a stretch goal of at least five percent of students who are moving into credit programs. And some of the intentional efforts really include VP Wilson and I and our teams working very closely together on trying to align our programs so that non-credit programs bridge into credit programs, either by way of articulation or other mechanisms. And then we've also making sure that we're embedding credentials into the programs. And so you can think of the non-credit programs as a stepping stone into the credit programs or feeder into the credit programs. And you'll see that for fall of two thousand and twenty-two, we had six hundred and sixty-one students who had transitioned from a credit program, from a non-credit program into a credit program, and for the winter, six hundred and fifty-one at the date of record. And that accounted for approximately eleven percent of the enrollment for those terms.
Okay, next, we'll look at the comparison between us and GISD over the same stretch. As you noted before, or as you saw before, if you talk or looked at just our headcount over that five-year stretch, you saw this fluctuation of headcount. As you look here at this particular chart, you'll see more of just a consistent decline in terms of their grads choosing to go to college. The first graph shows you the total graduates going to college, the gray. The yellow represents those enrolling in any college, and then the blue represents our share of students enrolling here. Of note, and I believe I shared this at the last meeting, of the GISD students choosing to go to college in this area, we are the number one choice. And so we will continue effort that. But however, you can see, it's not a growing pipeline of students to pull from. And so we have to augment that with other populations and other pipelines. Next slide here. Okay, so now, I wanted to go over distance education versus online learning. Go ahead. And, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting, and you've had this slide, so I won't read it, but I do think the themes are appropriate at the bottom of the slide that really reflect not just our approach prior to the pandemic, but I would say other colleges as well. Distance education was treated as a colleges as well. Distance education was treated as a, something that was not for everybody, let's cautiously kind of make sure that people are good fits for that, lots of prep efforts, other things to ensure success in that regard. And that was the approach. In essence, the pandemic really shifted that and changed that. We were forced to change at scale and at speed that we didn't even think was possible instructionally, and I would say both operationally at the college. Next slide. So what we did to meet that challenge, pretty unprecedented, and we obviously weren't the only schools that did that. 90% of our courses online, 300-plus faculty trained, providing opportunities for faculty to have home offices, retrofitted classrooms, really a, and that's just a, a brief list of the number of things that we've done to transform the institution in a very, very short timeframe when you just think about higher ed historically to do these things. This represents online learning. This is where we are today. This is where we're going to be. And moving forward, I would expect us to adopt more and more of the technologies and approaches in this space. Next slide here. So this slide is really showing over the three-year stretch, how we've shifted in terms of delivery of instruction. The yellow line shows you the number of face-to-face courses that we did offer compared to the number that we offer now. The blue line shows you the number of online courses compared to the number that we offer now. Basically, they've been inverted. And I've talked about that in different, different meetings where we have really, again, shifted to respond to the nature of, of how our students want to take courses. Next slide. This really sums up that percentage. You've heard me at different presentations talk about two-thirds of our offerings really have either an online or hybrid delivery mode. This shows you how that has shifted over the last three years, where three years ago, we were 70% face-to-face. And in a very short time, moving forward, we are 30% face-to-face. Next slide. And this shows you that our students are driving that change. This is course enrollment. So if our students didn't want it, they wouldn't take it. So they're telling us what they want, and we're responding to that. That headcount number that you see for the, for yellow, shows you how we've gone from about 31,000 students taking classes face-to-face predominantly to 10,000. Comparatively, you can see that approximately 11,000 students were taking online classes. That number jumped, obviously, to 31,000 during the pandemic, but it's leveled off a little bit at 22,000, 200. And hybrid showing 43. My point in showing this slide is that the college and, and really academic affairs is striving to find the sweet spot. We know that the answer is not all one way or the other. We know that. We'll continue to engage with our students to really figure out what is that sweet, sweet spot in the delivery that they want, that they respond to. And that puts us in boat with our other colleagues across the state and across the country. Where is the sweet spot? Next slide. And this, again, is just a summary of what those course enrollments look like, again, in terms of total percentage, percentages. Next slide.
Can you go back one, Jeff? So this slide represents the trend in modality for non-credit enrollment. And you'll note that a large portion of what we were able to offer was in person, but you see that it, we started to trend and see increases in the number of both hybrid and, and remote offerings that, that we were able to deliver over the last five years.
Okay, the next slide goes into the request or the question around success as we've moved into this new modality. And this is some preliminary data. I want to be very clear around the, the, the concept of determining success rates. There are many, many more variables that really illustrate to us the success of one delivery mode versus another outside of just grades. I'm showing you grades, but certainly other factors that go into that have to do with, you know, the quality that the course is being taught, making sure that our faculty are proficient in delivery in an online environment, and other factors. So this is really just a, a preliminary look at success that's occurring across the different modes. You can see from 2019, 2020, that we were pretty flat with face-to-face really being where, where we traditionally have been and face-to-face kind of increasing over the next two years from there in terms of grades, and certainly showing that online and hybrid has, has taken a dip or a decline. This is why, why you will hear me talk about the professional development and really our pivot and shift into becoming more proficient in online instruction, utilization of tools, ensuring that our students are as, as literal, sorry, as, yeah, as literal in a digital space as they are in a face-to-face space. We know our students take courses and, and, you know, one student can have an online course and a face-to-face course in their same semester. We know that. But we want to make sure that the quality of instruction for that student is at the same par if they're taking a face-to-face course and an online course in the same semester. Next slide here. And again, another brief kind of piece to looking at our success in these three modes, looking at face-to-face and how it has tracked or paced, and looking at the other modes as well, online and hybrid. Those are GPAs. So again, we're pleased with that, but we're not spiking the football, saying we've arrived and we're here. We understand a lot goes into determining success in those areas. And with that, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Beverly.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Do any of the trustees have any questions?
I just had a quick question. The last meeting that you spoke about high flex, and you said that you were going to research that to see which way the student, are you still in the process of doing that?
I am trustee. It's a great, great question. We're going to Denver for the AACC convention. And that's one of the sessions and one of the topics that I'm looking to hear from my colleagues about. The high flex, just to the trustee's point, is really this emerging mode of instruction that allows a student to have ultimate flexibility where they're able to, to come to class on the days that they feel like getting face-to-face instruction and take the same class online on the days they feel like being online. Completely revolutionary for us in that space. So we know that the, and again, to that question and the point, these are the kinds of steps and shifts that our students need us to make. And so we have to get proficient at that. So yes, that's a long way of saying yes, but yes.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. Madam President?
That concludes the special presentations.
That means we jump back down to the approval of the minutes.
I think we-
Approval of the special organization meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2023.
I think we approved the minutes already.
Pardon?
I think we already approved the minutes.
We didn't, we only went through the one. We've gone through all of them?
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I believe we went through the first one, but not the rest.
That's what I assumed.
I don't recall any board action on the minutes.
No, we've only done the first one where we talked about, and then we needed to correct that for the special meeting, but this is now the special meeting of 99-105G. Approve the special meeting, special organizational meeting of minutes of January 23rd, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Is any changes or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, like I said before, I would like to include a particular public comment that was eliminated from the January 23rd special meeting minutes.
Are we?
And I'll provide it to you.
Mr. Freeman, please wait till the chair-
Sir?
Till you're recognized.
Sir, I believe we're in the special organize, organizational meeting minutes. That was what, are we on that?
Yes, Mr. Freeman, and I can explain that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mrs. Couch? At the last time we brought this up, you had offered to give Mr. Jordan the papers that you have on that for the special meeting of January 23rd. That was the first meeting of that evening. Now we are on to the second one that's on there that is approval of the special organizational meeting minutes of January 23rd. And as you see on your agenda, it's 99-105G.
Yeah.
So was there a correction or a change from those that you needed done?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. So seeing none, and we have a second. Is there any other changes that we need to make or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2023. This is item 107-111F. Are there any corrections? First, is there a motion to accept them?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by trustee Wilcox. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Freeman. Is there any corrections or changes? Seeing none. All those in favor of the approval of the regular meetings of January 23rd, 2023 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. They're approved. Approval of the special meeting of February 2nd, 2023. This is item 112-116E. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have an emotion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any correction or discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. It passes. Approval of the special meeting minutes of March 6th, 2023. This is item 117-121E. Is there a motion to approve those? So moved. Is there a second? Is there a second from John?
Yeah, I said second, yeah.
Okay. So we have approval and a second. Do we have any corrections or changes in these? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. It passed. Informational reports.
Point of inquiry.
Pardon?
Point of inquiry.
Yes, Mr. Daley.
I just want to be sure that I understand that the minutes of the special meeting of January 23rd have been, are being tabled until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, because we have to have the information from trustee Couch, and then we will bring those forward at the April meeting. Are there any other inquiries?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move to the informational reports. Mr. Swanson? Chair of the Finance Committee.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we met on last Wednesday, the 23rd. Unfortunately, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Daley couldn't be there. But everybody should have, the minutes should have been passed out to you for your review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Wendy, do you have a report?
Uh, yep. We met on March 23rd at 4:00 PM. And also, everything was passed out to all the trustees, the unofficial minutes. And I believe there's some out on the table also if you did not get any.
Thank you. Under other reports, Mr. Daley, do you have a report for us from the MCC Board of Directors?
Yes, sir. The MCC Board of Directors has been focusing upon the budget, the state budget development. And I have two reports from them that I would like to see incorporated in the minutes for this meeting. The first one is FY24 Budget Priorities for Michigan's 34, or 31 community colleges. And the second is the FY24 Executive Budget Recommendations Questionnaires, which has already been filled out. And in reading, when you read the questionnaire, you'll see that they established four high priority items with regards to the budget. And then the other item I have is that MCC on April 13th will be holding a legislative forum in Lansing. And I believe that information's going to go out to the other board members. So if you want to attend that, that'll be an all-day affair, but it should be pretty interesting.
Very good, Mr. Daley.
It's a legislative, uh, legislative, it's April 13th.
Madam President? We would like to make sure that Mr. Daley's reports are put into our next minutes so that they will be reviewed by the rest of the trustees. Thank you. The ACCT Board of Directors do have a report for Mr. Reyes.
Well, since Mr. Reyes isn't here, I did write something up that I'd like to read. It is a little lengthy. This past month, this past month, I had the privilege of traveling to Washington DC to advocate for the college and attend the National Legislative Summit sponsored by the ACCT. We had the opportunity to participate in many work sessions, connect with other elected trustees around the nation, and advocate on Capitol Hill for the best interests of Mott Community College. Some of the topics we communicated with, our lawmakers included, continued to establish Pell Grant eligibility for shorter-term programs, stopping the taxation of Pell Grants, creating flexible funds for basic needs grant, and our career training program, just to name a few. We discussed the funding for our childcare center. I explained what a precious gem we had with the Eleanor Crowdy Center and the needs to keep funding such program. In regards to the childcare center, I want to thank Andy Everman for getting the trustees together for the recent tour that he put together. And we put everything in perspective by taking that tour. We had the opportunity to have a one-on-one with the United States Senators Debbie Stabenow and Gary Peters in their offices. In addition to the Senate, we met with staffers in Representative Kildee's office as well. During the joint meeting with senators, they each expressed a deep appreciation of Mott Community College and seemed to agree with us and the needs we presented. Overall, the National Legislative Summit was very educational for us newly-elected trustees. Working together, we will communicate the needs of MCC around the nation. We will continue to use these events to learn, grow, and expand the presence of Mott Community College.
Thank you. I need to go back one to the ACCT Board of Directors report. Madam President, was there anyone that attended the Board of Directors besides Mr. Reyes?
Mr. Reyes is the only Board of Director, so no.
So we, we don't have a report from that. So I guess now we go to the reports from the early February meeting that I believe Mr. Reyes, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Swanson, and Wendy attended. And if you would like to make a report to the board on what happened there, Mr. Freeman, could you give us an update on your activities in DC?
Well, actually, I think Trustee Wilcox did a great job in framing everything that took place, so we were all able to attend. The, all the sessions that were offered as well, we actually, well, all went together into the Hill and did exactly what Trustee Wilcox reported, so.
Thank you, Trustee Freeman. Trustee Swanson?
Well, seeing as you picked me last, I really don't have anything to say after Wendy. She pretty much covered everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Under unfinished business. There is no unfinished business. New business. We need to pause for a moment because the agenda that they have given me does not match the agenda that you have, so please hold for just a minute while we go into recess for a couple of minutes while I confer with Jordan. I will ask the trustees, our president is out for a moment, and I think we should wait just a moment for her to return. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 1.27, Treasurer's Report for February 2023. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
Support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay? The ayes have it. Item number 1.28, Tuition, Institutional Technology, Student Administration, and Student Service Fees. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Can we have a second from Dr. Daley? Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilcox?
Aye.
Mrs. Couch?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
And Trustee Everman? Aye. Item number 1.29, Resolution for New Campus Entry Sign Purchase Award. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Trustee Couch. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I have one question for our Board Attorney. Because this is bond money, and given what it says on the bond issue, is this money that we can actually use for this?
I see Mr. Gothrup over there. Did you have a comment on this point?
Thank you. So the ballot language from March 10th, 2020 reads, "Shall Charles Stewart MOC Community College, Genesee County, Michigan borrow the sum of not to exceed $80 million and issue its bonds, therefore, in one or more series for the purpose of making permanent improvements to renovating," excuse me, "permanent improvements to renovating, remodeling, improving, equipping and re-equipping college buildings and sites and other buildings to be used by the college for instructional purposes, acquiring buildings and sites for buildings, and constructing buildings in additions to buildings." So there has been instances where Dickinson Wright are their bond attorneys, they're the ones that advise us, and there are some instances where we didn't know whether or not it was within the bond language, we had to get consultation. But in the language of the ballot, I'll be vague, a bit vague, improving sites is clearly in the language for signage, campus signage.
Okay. Trustees, there's an explanation. I accept Mr. Gothrup's explanation. If you feel as if it's an illegal motion, you could challenge that at this point. If not, we can move forward with this. If you would like to divide the question, we can also do that at this time. So you have two questions. One, do you want to challenge that this is an illegal motion? And then we would refer it to our attorney for a legal opinion, which would postpone getting the signs done for the 100th anniversary. So is there any interest in doing that? Seeing none, do you need to divide the question for the two contractors for this? Because we have only two bids for the two items, so is there any interest in doing that? Seeing that, we now move forward to the motion, which is the new campus entry signs. Since it is a great deal of money, once again, I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Point of order, do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a motion. 1.29.
Think anyone did.
No, there's no, I don't think there's a motion. Who made the motion?
Didn't we have a motion, and then Sue seconded it? Then I have made a mistake, and you are correct. Then we have to have a motion for item 1.29, Resolution for the New Campus Entry Sign Purchase Award.
So moved.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Now, Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilcox?
Aye.
Mrs. Couch?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Everman, aye. Congratulations, we're getting new signs. Item number 1.30. When Wendy and I met with Dr. Beverly the other day to go over the agenda, she enthusiastically told us about the opportunity that the governor had offered her to serve on the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Board. She asked for my permission, and I felt that we need to bring this to each of you so that you would all hear about it, and then if you had any questions or concerns, we could ask them now. So is there a motion to?
I make a motion to support Dr. Beverly's appointment to the MEDC.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second from Mr. Daley. Is there any questions or questions for Dr. Beverly? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Congratulations, Dr. Beverly. Administrative items, the president's report.
Yes, if I could have, please, Chief Livingston, would you please come forward? And he's going to give the safety and health report.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Beverly, esteemed trustees, I'm going to start off with the health report. Not much really to report, next slide, please. I just want to reiterate the fact that the Health Services Clinic at MOC Community College is really run by three individuals. We have a director, Dr. Russell Bush, a nurse practitioner, Pat Ward, and our very own Lieutenant Mike Becker, who is a licensed paramedic. As a matter of fact, Lieutenant Becker is going to be receiving some training here shortly to update his license. Not much took place, next slide, please. Not much took place over the course of the last month, perhaps because of the fact that we had our spring break, but we had one physical exam that was given by the nurse practitioner, that was a full exam. The other medical exams, just so you know, medical exams are many, things like somebody reported they had the flu, or maybe they were hurt, things like that. We had three of those medical consults. We're not sure what that, happened with that, just because of HIPAA laws, but the nurse practitioner spoke with a student about something that, we document that as well. Another test we had was a deflorescent testing of a faculty member. And what I will say about the Health Services Clinic, it's something that has been run very well by Lieutenant Mike Becker. It's an awesome thing for all students, faculty, and staff to use. Students use it for their physicals that they need in order to be able to be enrolled in a certain discipline, for example, respiratory therapy or nursing, things like that. Positive COVID reports, we still do those daily, and we report those daily. The slide indicates that we're 11 as of last Friday, but now that's up to 14. Those are reported daily, and we report those to the Genesee County Health Department so they can keep tabs on that as well. So we continue to do that on a daily basis. There is, I'm told, that sometime in May, the government may not require these types of notifications, but we'll have to wait and see what goes with that, so. That's my brief health report, not much to report. Do you have any questions before I move on to the safety report?
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, the safety report, not much happened, but I do want to talk about our active assailant training that we had this past Thursday. As many of you are aware, the strategic goals at MOC Community College require two active assailant trainings per year. One in the fall is geared more toward a tabletop exercise with the leadership of the college, and one in the spring is an actual mock active assailant drill. We actually locked down the college in order to test some of the systems and our responses. We conducted such a test this past, drills this past Thursday. In addition to those two trainings, we have ongoing training classes provided by the Department of Public Safety to teach students, faculty, and staff how to remain safe in the event of an active assailant incident. Results of the drill I'm very, I'm actually very happy with. I don't have the full numbers, but most of the students, faculty, and staff complied with what was required of them during active, an active assailant drill. They took shelter, they stayed quiet, I'm very pleased with that. It showed me that our training efforts as a Department of Public Safety is paying off, and just by the results of that training. One of the things that was interesting with the training, we had three individuals, special agents from the FBI participating, basically going around to see what we could do better, and offering suggestions. We also had the emergency manager from the Genesee County Emergency Management Team with us also to give their assessment, and actually overall, it went very well. One of the FBI special agents was actually very knowledgeable in the incident command. He was at the Michigan State University Command Post recently with their active shooter, and he indicated that it was chaotic. The way we had our setup was very good for a basic, even better than some municipal police departments have there, so we're very pleased with that. We've still got some things we've got to work on, but we're very pleased with that. We utilize our police recruits from the Law Enforcement Regional Training Academy to assist the Department of Public Safety officers in documenting who was in compliance, who wasn't, what systems were working, like the informa cast, whether it was working or not, whether the speakers were loud enough, those types of things. So we don't have all the data put together yet, but when we do, we'll be putting together an after-action report that will be provided to Dr. Beverly and the, maybe the cabinet for their, for them to digest and see where we can make improvements in the future for these types of training exercises. That's all I have for now. If anyone has any questions?
Are there any questions, trustees? Seeing none, Chief Livingston, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sheri Nowak and Larry Gothrup to come forward to talk about the mailing incident.
Good evening, Madam President, and Chairman Everman, and the Board of Trustees. So I'm going to talk about the mail incident. I'll talk a little bit about what happened, what HR is going to, what HR is doing differently as a result of this, and then I'll turn it over to Larry to also talk about what the mailroom is doing differently. So and just for your reference, I'll talk about a 1095C. A 1095C is a tax form that employers need to provide to their employees. It's through the Affordable Care Act, which shows what months employees had creditable coverage, which means it meets the minimum guidelines of the Affordable Care Act, as well as not only the coverage, but also the pricing. So it's called a 1095C. So on Friday, March 3rd, HR worked with the mailroom to send 1095Cs to employees who did not elect to receive them electronically. HR printed them with unmasked social security numbers in error, and began to put them in envelopes, and the mailroom finished putting them in envelopes, adding postage, and mailing them. So that was Friday, March 3rd. The following week, on Wednesday, March 8th, I received an email from an employee stating that their social security number was exposed in the window of the envelope. This was the first email where we became aware of a possibility of a disclosure of personally identifiable information. It was taken seriously, as I acted quickly but with due diligence, and began a preliminary review to understand if this was an isolated incident or not. On Thursday, the next day, I received a phone call from an EC member about an employee in their area with a social security number exposed in the window of an envelope. It was then I understood that the prior incident was not isolated, and we immediately began an investigation. On Friday, March 10th, the next day, I had the initial call with the insurance company to notify them, so we were doing what we needed to do under the law because it involved social security numbers. social security numbers. On Wednesday, March 15th, I had a follow-up call with the insurance company. I continued to investigate, to ask questions about the technology and the 1095C process. And then on Friday, March 17th, I emailed the preliminary notice to impacted employees. So what we're doing to prevent a recurrence is, I've already discussed with the HR team on Wednesday, March 15th, about reminding everybody the importance to protect employee information. I had the staff review Board Policy 5403 on social security number privacy and information security policy, which was all submitted by the 24th. We are ensuring that social security numbers are masked where possible. We use a consultant through Farilly to help us with Colleague, which is the technology we do, we use in human resources. So I contacted them to investigate defaulting the code to mask social security numbers to be yes, meaning mask them. It's right now, it's currently defaulted to be no, don't mask them. So that requires a little bit more investigation on our part to do that. We also are updating the instructions on how our department runs the 1095Cs. We're looking to see if 1095Cs can be printed on a particular type of paper, which is what we use for W2s. We are also training our team in cross-training. We have a lot of new people, we're creating checklists and making sure we're documenting processes so that we can sustain operations despite any changes in our staff. We've discontinued using window envelopes in HR. I've also asked the staff to install Virtu on their computers, which is a way of encrypting emails. And finally, we'll be considering asking employees to receive their W2s and their 1095Cs electronically, and then they won't need to be mailed. They get them through My Backpack, which is an employee portal. I'll turn it over to Larry to talk about what's happening in the mailroom.
So the incident that occurred with the mailroom, or with the mailings, I went today and spoke to the individuals in the mailroom to figure out exactly what had happened. We have, and generally, they're, but they have been very, very good as a last check, and they've caught a lot of mailings that went out that shouldn't have went out, nothing with sensitive information, but data tell will sometimes spit out garbage, and it'll get printed and folded, and then it's caught in the mailroom. So the mailroom actually has a automated machine that you feed the paper in one side, window envelopes on the other, and it automatically folds and puts them in. So they never touched them, it wasn't a hand folding of any sort. Then the process was, there were, I think there were some done prior, but it was very painstaking labor, trying to fold those perfectly, get them in, and that's when our mailroom informed HR that, hey, we have a machine that can do this. So they went through and did that, sorted those, there was 488, I believe, that went out. And it was confirmed to me that those were checked to make sure that there was nothing, there was nothing visible as far as personal information. What had happened is that if that somehow shifts, because the folding envelope obviously is a little bit larger than the paper, if it shifted up, then that's when it became visible. So there was a spot checker, there was a check done when they went out. And that's confirmed by ones that came back. We had some that were returned undeliverable, and there was nothing, you couldn't see the personal information. So if the letter shifts in the envelope, that's what had happened, is that they were checked and that there was nothing visible when they were sent. What we need to do, and I talked to them today, is, hey, when we do mailing envelopes like this, we need to double-check, tap them, see if they'll move, and if there's anything that's visible at that point in time. The first thing, obviously, as Sheri has said, the first safeguard is that we don't send unmasked social security personal information out. That's the first step. And then the second step is that we need to make sure that in the event that those things are happening, there's window envelopes, and there's only one size window envelope that we have, we don't have multiple sizes of those, is that they're checked to make sure that they don't move around, that they can't move around, and that they, if they do, then they can check and see if, whether or not something becomes visible at that time. Also, our equipment, it's relatively new, but we need better maintenance schedules on the equipment to make sure it doesn't break down. I believe we've had issues where there's been, you know, they've been taped, manually taped and sent out because the folder was not working properly. And so instead of waiting for it to break down and have someone come in, we do need a better maintenance schedule. We have a maintenance schedule on every single piece of equipment almost on our campus, but not in the mailroom, so we need to do that as well. And then, of course, the termination of using window envelopes altogether, while it sounds really easy and basic, it will cause other problems as far as additional man-hours of printing labels, putting the labels on the right envelopes, that type of thing to get out as well. So that is also a consideration that we talked to. But I believe, like I said, in the past, there's countless times that there have been things that were caught in that mailroom before they went out, saving the college hundreds of dollars in postage. If we continue to be more diligent and understanding that with window envelopes, there is more risk, and so we're going to double-check to make sure that they don't move, if they do slide around, nothing becomes visible before they get set out.
Is that the end of the report?
Yes, are there any questions?
Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions? And please direct your questions to the chair, and then we'll instruct them to answer them. Owning a printing business, things happen. You guys did a good job trying to take care of it, thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Miscellaneous business, this was chair request, and a lobbyist report has been completed with, I believe we had the lady that was going to explain to us about what she's doing?
Right, she's logged off.
Okay, all right. The request, and why I've requested this, trustees, is that our lobbyist does a lot of work for us in Lansing to get us funding. We don't often get an update, and it's nice to hear what they're doing for us for the money that we're spending, and it's great that the Michigan Community College Association has the event. Mr. Daley, it's the 19th?
Okay.
Okay. So, and I would encourage any trustee to make sure you check with Mr. Jordan to get on the agenda so that you can go down to Lansing for that. It's a great learning experience. The water report we were given, we hadn't heard what was going on with the water, new trustees did not know our past history, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware. The Michigan Association of School Board, Region 5 election, number three. We were supposed to vote on that, and we would have voted in March. Since the meeting was canceled, we did not vote. And after the board votes collectively, we have one vote, and then the chair submits the vote. I did not, because I did not have input from the rest of the board. However, James Johnson did win the election, and I believe he is from the Carmody Ames Wish School Board, and it would be nice if the board would like to have him come and explain what they do. And I am now looking for consensus, is this something that we would like to have happen in the future? Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Daley?
We'll have a representative on the board.
I'm sorry, could you turn your microphone off?
I love it. We'll have a representative on the board?
The, no, this is the Region 5, this is our representative for the Michigan Association of School Boards for Region 5. And the ISD, we have the board that we do have a contact with, and Jason, as well as Robert Matthews, has told us about them. Wendy?
I have no objection.
That's fine.
No, and Sue?
No, I have no objections.
No objections to have, okay, thank you. The next item was the development of a student, staff, faculty, retirees' campus photo gallery for people who have died since 2019. Now, in our discussions that Wendy and I had with Dr. Beverley, she felt that this was too traumatic for our students to do this. And so she is going to come up with an idea for us in the future, how we could honor this, and then she'll tell us about this later. The Committee of the Hall trustee book review. So that you have an idea of what I'm talking about for the books, the ACCT, this is Effective Advocacy Book that they publish and they give out at their January meeting. Many of us don't know how to effectively, which is one of the good things about the Michigan Community College Association, they're going to help us with that in the future. So this is the type of book. The other item was, this is the CBO and the board performance and how you evaluate. This is done by Carver. The Carver has a model of boardsmanship, and I'm going to pass these out so you can see what I'm talking about. Could you pass that down, please? Could you pass that the other way? So I don't expect a complete answer on this this evening, we need to think about how we're doing this, because in June, we have historically had a retraining program that we do for the board. And instead of waiting to the last minute, I would like to get some input from the board so we have an idea of what we would like to do in June. The next item is, it relates to this.
Mr. Chair, it's actually May.
Okay, I'm sorry, May, so we don't have nearly as much time. The next item is the trustee evaluation procedure.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. What exactly is being, I mean, is this like suggested reading, or?
The book, for example, on how to evaluate the president, we should have a clear directive of what we as trustees, as a board collectively, expect from our president, and we need to put that together. There's also how the board develops, there's several different books that they do, that the Carvers do. And they, I have spoken with them, and we're going to talk some more about what the possibilities are for this. It also helps us for Committee of the Hall. So instead of having the meetings that we do with the personnel and finance, we could meet prior to this to go over information that we need, might need to know. So it will streamline the way we do our business later on without necessarily having to have those Wednesday meetings.
Can you just simply say, what are you suggesting we do?
What I'm suggesting we do is just look and see if we want to do this, we'll talk about this at a future meeting in April, and say, this is what we'd like to do. Because remember, we're going to be doing the work in May. The trustee evaluation procedure, you go through this, get this back to Jordan or me so that, and then when you give them to Jordan, he'll give them to me, and I'll compile them. So we have some idea of what we're thinking we're doing individually as trustees and what we're doing as a board. And you will recognize this, Mr. Daley, because this comes from the Michigan Community College Association. So that concludes the chair request for what we're doing. Yes?
I have a question. Just so everyone's clear, when you and I and Dr. Beverley were in a meeting together, this book review that we're doing, you want us to, are we reading this together and going through it? Or are we taking this home and reading it, and then you want us, you had mentioned that you're going to assign each of us a chapter? I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, so I know.
There's several ways we did this in the past, and one of them-
Well, hold on really quick. So you said you want, you want us to read it, you're going to assign us a chapter, and then we are responsible for writing like a little review over that chapter essentially? And is that what we're going to read aloud to everyone, or?
In this case, with this, with the Carver model, we'll all do it collectively, we'll read it or not read it. And then when we have the Carver people come in for a presentation, we'll all be knowledgeable enough so we won't have to do the chapter by review. Because I understood when we met with Dr. Beverley, you didn't want to do that.
Correct, I didn't want to do that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I heard my name, but I didn't hear what was said, so I'm just trying to, I didn't hear what was said about me.
When we met with you, when Wendy and I talked with you, when we were talking about the review, and it's pretty much perfunctory because nothing's happening with us. We're just going to look at the book, get the books for people to read so that they know, and then we can talk about it in May. And when we get together again for our next preparation for the meeting, we'll talk more about how we're preparing for the May meeting, so that we can talk about this in the April meeting, so the rest of the boards prepare. Okay. Now moved to comments from the probably, from the board, excuse me. Mr. Freeman?
I'm sorry?
Comments from the board members?
Uh, no, no comments.
No comments. Mr. Daley?
No comments.
Mrs. Wilcox?
Uh, no comments.
Mrs. Couch?
No comments.
Mr. Swanson?
No comments.
And I have no comments. It appears that there's no need for executive session. The meeting's adjourned at 10:37. Thank you.